Hafedeh, good afternoon colleagues. We are continuing with the second reading file. We are on Bill number 257-36 LS. Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I move to set the bill aside to be placed directly after Bill number 327-36.
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion passes. We're now on Bill number 298-36 LS. Senator Nelson, you are recognized. Or Senator, are we ready? Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to set aside Bill number 298-36 LS right after I'm going to cut. I'm going to cut in between two, the previous motion, but right after the National Tennis Federation Tennis Facilities, Bill number 327-36. So, the order would be 327-36, 298-36, and then 257-36. Madam Speaker, can we just get a quick recess because we need to coordinate with the OFB Chair to see what committees are coming in for the specific bills at this time?
All right, one minute recess, please.
Thank you.
We're back from recess. We are on Bill number 298-36 LS. Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So, we're going to maintain the motion where 327-36 COR will be entertained first, and then 298-36 LS, and then 257-36 LS. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
All right. There's a motion to resolve into the Committee of the Whole to treat the bills in that order in the Committee of the Whole before rising. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We are resolved into the Committee of the Whole to be presided by Senator Sinagastin, Chairman of the Committee on Appropriations.
The Committee of the Whole is in session. We'll call on the Sergeant-at-Arms to swear in our panel members.
Please stand and raise your right hand. Under penalty of perjury, do you all affirm that any and all information you provide today, whether it be verbally, electronically, and in writing, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Madam Chair, under oath, thank you.
Sajid Smasi, Sergeant-at-Arms. Materials for the Committee of the Whole are in the shared session Google Drive folder labeled 1222 Committee of the Whole. Proposed amendments must be submitted in writing to the clerk via email at 36gl-session@gmail.com. Amendments not in writing will be called out of order. Three rounds for discussion will be given. We will have two rounds of questions for the panel, with each senator allotted five minutes for questions, not including responses. Time to speak may not be yielded from more than one member to another. A member who yields that member's time on a question yields all that member's time on that question, and may not later speak, even if all the time yielded was not used. After the completion of the two rounds of questions, panelists will be excused. The third round is for amendments or comments to speak on the bill. After we complete discussion of the bill, we will allow the sponsor to close, and we will entertain a motion for the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole, followed by a motion to rise from the Committee of the Whole, at which time we will report out the bills as recommended by the Committee of the Whole. We will begin with Bill number 327-36 COR, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations, and Housing, an act to add a new Article 13, Chapter 77, Division 2, Title 12, Guam Code annotated, relative to allowing businesses contributing to the design and construction of the Guam National Tennis Federation tennis facilities to be eligible for tax credits. I'd like to ask the panel to please introduce themselves, starting from my far right.
Hafedeh, good afternoon. Lester Carlson from BBMR.
Johnson-Nicholas Gida.
Hafedeh Melmandiola-Gida.
I'm Torgan Smith, Guam National Tennis Federation.
Stephen Gruehl, Office of Finance and Budget.
Sajid Smasi to the panel. We will begin with the first round of questions. We have five minutes per senator, not including the responses from the panel. I'm sorry, please excuse me. But we'll begin with an opening statement from the sponsor of the bill. Senator Sinagastin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My colleagues, the Tennis Federation has been supporting our athletes for more than 50 years, and their desire to provide state-of-the-art facilities have been motivated by the determination of our local tennis players. Capital improvements to the tennis facilities at the Deter Complex have been made through the assistance of many private businesses, allowing the Federation to build a self-sustaining tennis center to further develop the sport of tennis, and letting the sport to grow among our youth. With this legislation, it will allow more private business to contribute to the capital improvement of the Guam National Tennis Federation facilities, which contributing businesses may be eligible for tax credit. The total amount of tax credit against the BBT shall not exceed $600,000 over the two-year period, and no more than $300,000 in tax credit shall be authorized for each year of the program. The Guam National Tennis Federation may ask the legislation for an extension if tax credits are not fully exhausted. Amendments have been made through the committee, reducing the years, like, the years the tax credits will be available, from three years to two years by the request of the Federation. Also, the National Tennis Federation agreed to work in partnership with the Department of UFFERS to host tennis clinics for DYA clients at least twice a year, which is reflected in the amended version. As we strive to promote the health of our people, partnering with the private sector is also beneficial as we work hand-in-hand in achieving a healthier Guam and community. My colleagues, please be mindful that allowing the tax credit is not going against the current, any taxes we collect from them, because if they're not paying taxes to begin with, there's nothing we're losing. This is basically to help the Tennis Federation build their center and grow the tennis, the tennis sport. I ask for the affirmative support of my colleagues on this legislation. Sajid Smasi, thank you, Madam Chair.
Sajid Smasi, Senator Sinagastin. Now we'll begin with the first round of questions. Senator Tiedagu, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon to my colleagues as well as the panel. The bill that is amended, could I ask the author of the legislation what was amended from this bill, from the original bill?
Please repeat the question, Senator Tiedagu.
Sure. Asking, this bill is amended, and wanted to know what changes were from the original bill?
If I'm correct, to my colleagues, Madam Chair, it was referring to specifically from three years to two years. That was the main gist of the amendment. All we did was reduce the number of years, so it's not extended.
Okay. And thank you to the author for the answer. And nothing else has changed since, right? Just that?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. On page, page five, line six, where it says, "The public access to Guam National Tennis Federation Center has a condition for the Guam National Tennis Federation and its contributors to be entitled to tax benefits of the program established in this article. The Guam National Tennis Federation shall allocate time during which the public may utilize the Guam National Tennis Center facilities in accordance with the rules and policies adopted by the Guam National Tennis Federation for the GNTC." So, it's the Guam National Federation who will decide how much time the public is allowed on their facility. Can you tell me what the rules and regulations right now currently state that's going out to the National Federation?
Yes, Senator. The center is open daily from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and it's open to the public. There is a membership that people can pay to use the center without paying the hourly fee, but there is a, it's open to the public all the time for an hourly fee, which is $20 per hour during the nighttime, and it's $10 per hour in the daytime. We have like peak hour times, which I think is from 5:00 to 9:00, and that's $20 per hour. And the public is allowed to make reservation. Members have a ability to reserve 48 hours in advance. Any member of the public can reserve 24 hours in advance.
So, you know, based on, you know, the government of Guam providing this funding for the Federation, it doesn't say anything in here, you know, on line six, section 771360, to charge the public for using the facility. Is this something that's normally done now?
Yes. I mean, we still have to maintain it and staff it, and it's still, regardless of public access, it still has to be, we still have to be able to maintain it and fund it. So, yes, that's, that's what we do now.
Do you guys plan on adjusting your rules and policies to increase that amount anytime soon, or is this going to be fixed during the whole two years of this?
No, we don't plan to increase the amount. And in fact, I mentioned the membership, and our membership is intended to be as close to free as possible. So, a membership is, for a 18 and under is $50 per year, and a membership for a regular adult, membership is $365. So, you know, compared to, for example, the Hilton Tennis Club is more like $900 to $1,000 for a yearly membership for a single person, and there's no junior membership. So, we're there to try to encourage people to play, but we also, you know, understand and realize we have to have some revenue to continue the maintenance.
And you don't have to be a member in order to reserve the court, correct? That's what you said earlier?
Correct.
Okay. And the location of this, of the tennis court is where?
It's in, it's in the Guam Sports Complex. It's right next to the, to the existing gym.
And how many courts do you have?
Phase one, we did, we built six courts plus four youth courts, which is under 10 courts. And phase two, which we're just finishing now, is five additional courts, so total of 11 courts, all with lights, and also a building with office and bathroom showers.
In the event somebody wants to reserve a court, could they go longer than one hour? Because it's $20 an hour, correct, for, well, depends on who's renting it, but it's $20. Could they actually reserve it for two, three hours?
Well, we have limits on the reservation time. Right now, with the six courts, for singles you can reserve one hour, and for doubles you can reserve 90 minutes. So, the 90 minutes is $30. And the way it works out is, the system we have in place, when you make the reservation, it knows if you're a member, and then it says that you owe, and each person would owe, if you play singles, each person would owe $10 or $15, and if it's doubles, it knows who's a member, who's not a member, and will charge accordingly $5, $7.50. And we have, we have the center staffed during our peak times in the morning and the night.
This is also for pickleball as well?
We have accommodated pickleball. So, yes, we, on our, under 10 courts, we've drawn pickleball lines, and so we've accommodated a pickleball membership as well, just recently, with the second phase.
Has there been any interest in providing the development of the new courts? You know, the tax incentives, are there companies out there who are willing to already start the project?
Yes, we've already, like I said, we've already built it, and we have court naming, we've sold court naming rights, and we've finished the project, but the court naming rights that we sold was $100,000 for 10 years, and we allowed the companies to do $10,000 over 10 years. And in that case, we were able to go and borrow money and incur debt to do the project. And the reason this tax credit will help us is we can pay off some of that debt, because the interest is difficult for us to catch up. So, even though we have $100,000 per court, if we're paying $30,000, $40,000 a year for interest, then it makes it difficult for us to meet the, you know, to get it paid off by the time the 10-year sponsorship is finished.
It says here on page three, line 20, that the total amount of credits against unplugged business, privileged taxes for the construction, development, design, repair, or maintenance of the Guam National Tennis Federation Court. So, you're saying that you do have a construction company standing by, ready to?
It's finished, Senator. We built it already.
So, you're just paying off a loan?
We're going to, we're going to pay off debt, yeah. So, that's included in there. We still have some more things to finish also. We, we're going to build a hitting wall, and we're still have some sidewalks and some finishing things, but the, the phase one was done in 2020, and we've, we're just finishing phase two in the next couple of months.
If you're talking about the bulk of your, the cost that you're incurring is high because of interest, wouldn't it be more feasible to receive the $600,000 upfront to pay it off right away so that you would not have to pay interest?
Yes.
That's my last question for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Tiedagu. Senator Blas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you for the panel for being here. Mr. Smith, notice that the amount here is about $600,000 in tax credits that we're looking for?
Yes, Senator.
Is there a design already that we've got, that you've got for?
The project's finished. We've built it. The phase one, phase one costs, costs us about 1.5 million, and the second phase was another 700,000. So, we've already built 2.2 million worth of the project. So, like I said, we're, we've come to the legislature, sort of after the fact with not, not a dream, but we've done this, now can you help us? And I testified in the public hearing that this was, we didn't want to come and say, we want to ask for this money and have a plan. We wanted to do it. We got corporate sponsorship. We got some grant money from, from the International Federation, $50,000. It's not a lot on a 1.5 million dollar project, but it gives you credibility to go in and get more funding. We tried to get a grant from the Community Development Block Grant, and we, we didn't get anything from that. So, we, we were able to, we were able to convince the bank that with our sponsors, we could, we could tackle the debt service, and we have been, but we're not asking for the, for all of the funds. We just want to knock down some of our debt so we can have a more comfortable opportunity to grow the sport.
Okay, so how did you come up with the $600,000? I mean?
That's the debt we want to pay. We borrowed 700,000.
Okay.
And we've, we've paid a lot of it down, but we want to, between the, the phase two, where we added another five courts, and we're going to add a hitting wall, that's the amount that we were comfortable to, to pay down.
Okay. Ms. Mindiola, hi.
Hafedeh.
Hafedeh.
Senator.
Is this an unusual, or how would you characterize, I mean, I guess, this is not the cart before the horse, okay, the cart's gone, now we need to pay for the horse?
Thank you for that question, Senator. It's the form language of the, of the bill is standard, and has The unusual piece, of course, is of the debt service portion, although it does make sense to us in as far as usually construction is not, even though you have phase one and phase two, a lot of times you want kind of a continuous flow of work to be done and the Tennis Federation had the wherewithal to, to encumber the debt to, to be able to do it. And so, we believe that because the, as far as Gita's concerned, in the language of the bill to the page three, line seven, construction, development, upgrade, repair, or maintenance, or the debt, debt service for the cost of the same, perhaps an amendment that says, or debt service for the cost of the same previously incurred, in, as so long as the debt, as so long as the, the debt service is for construction, development, upgrade, repair, or maintenance, and in as far as the rules were followed in as far, and the rules were followed with regard to procurement, so the regular documents that we always ask for, those can still be presented to verify that the work has been done and in good order. We don't see an issue with this. That's the unusual, that's the, the thing that's unique about this particular tax credit, out of the ordinary about this particular tax credit. If you recall, this year, the, this was the first year, I believe, that we started, that there was legislation proffered for medical equipment that was unique about that particular tax credit that was proffered by Senator Shelton. There was also Guam Basketball Federation, which proffered a tax credit specific to competition, equipment, and things along those lines. So, it's generally the needs of the, what, how the needs of the organization match the needs of the funding. And so, it's okay, it makes sense to us.
Okay. I just want to, you know, because again, like you had said, Mr. Smith, this is kind of, you know, unusual. I'm looking at this, okay, I, I thought you already built this and again, so, I'll just go ahead and, Madam Chair, I'll listen to other questions and come back second round. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Thank you very much. Senator Turlahy. Senator Sinagusti.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Minjola, just going back to a little bit on what you mentioned. So, then maybe we just need to use an amendment to the bill to just allow them the flexibility so they can use the, the, the tax credit to pay off whatever they've done and moving forward. And as long as you understand, they understand, this is the limit. This is all you're getting and it's only so much a year and move on. I, I know I did hear earlier that maybe, maybe authorize the, the funding upfront, but wait a minute. It's about growing the, the industry, not paying and hoping that it'd be okay and then you come back next year. No, no. This is where there's a, there's a growth. I'm gonna correct Ms. Minjola that we're looking at possible amendment so they can allow the, in relation to construction and so forth, they could pay whatever is due and they can continue moving forward as long as they understand, based on the bill, it's 300,000 a year and moving forward and then it ends. Correct, Ms. Minjola? I just want to follow up exactly what you mentioned earlier.
That, that is correct, Senator. And I also want to add, we do have tax credits wherein the project came in somewhat under budget. For example, the Harmon Industrial Park Roadway Association, they remain with a hun, a balance of 165,000, so 166,000 under what was authorized. And so, this allows the organization flexibility to manage their cash flow as, as best they're able to. There, we, I think that Mr. Smith also evidenced earlier an active effort towards going after federal and local grants and private grants, as well as an active sponsorship program. And so, for all those reasons, I think that they have demonstrated through their responsible use of the first, through their responsible use of the, this program, and as well as their responsible use of grant funding, that they're a viable organization that can handle the, the compliance and the administration associated with maintaining a tax credit along these lines to pay off debt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Sinagusti. Senator Perez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, yeah, in looking at this, the tax credits would go towards debt service and that's really unusual that we're gonna give credit. So, can you explain how that works? How a company that's going to provide debt service? I mean, is, I think that's really unusual, like you said earlier. How does it work?
So, I'll, I'll ask our compliance assistant manager, Mr. Johnson-Nicholas, to chime in as well. But the way that we would normally handle a tax credit for current construction, or rather, remember, tax credits are always for past behavior. So, the work has to be done and then you present us with the receipts and then you are given the tax credit. We would be asking for pretty much the same thing here. We would be asking for the receipts and how that, how those, how the work was done and, and of course, make sure the work was done in accordance with what was stated in the law. It's for the Tennis Federation, it's for the Tennis Court, it's for phase two, whatever is articulated in the bill. And then the tax credit would be based on that. I think where the technical differences is really the time period that is being covered because it's previously incurred as opposed to incurred from the date of the, of the, the date of the passage of the law, of the prospective law.
Maybe this is a question for Torgan. So, what is the, what do you foresee as the contractor? Is this contractor gonna be, cover everything from, I mean, what, what would the contract look like? What, what type of contract are you gonna draw up for this particular project? Is it a one developer does everything or is it gonna be multiple?
It was multiple. We've already, we're already finished with it. We're already, we have just a few details to finish, but that's where we incurred the debt because we, we got our sponsorships and our sponsor agreements and then we were able to incur the debt to go forward with the project. So, it was multiple contractors. We had civil contractor, electrical contractor, one to do the building. We, the contractors worked with us, helping us with discounts and letting us have Hawaiian Rock pave directly and sort of letting us act as a sort of general contractor without having the, the pass-throughs. So, that's how we were able to get the project done.
Okay. Just for clarification, Mel, so is this credit, tax credit for things incurred in the past or is it for future expenditures?
Well, I believe the amendment that was suggested earlier was on page three, line seven, to the extent that business contributes to the actual cost of construction or the debt service for the cost of the same. So, the debt service, when I read that, the debt service, it's debt service to cover costs that were incurred prior to the passage of the bill.
So, this is a retroactive tax credit versus something that we're, we're thinking about in the future?
Senator, when we started, we were still in the, in the process of phase two, but we've, the, the process of getting the, the bill to where it is now, we've, we finished and we, we paid the contractors rather than asking them to wait until we have this opportunity for the bill because this is, this is not a guarantee. So, we, we paid. We, we paid the, we paid the contractors and vendors. And, yeah, so that's why we asked that the bill have debt service for cost of same because we've incurred that debt service.
Okay. So, how much do you owe at this point and how much do you plan to use for future projects?
We owe more than 600,000. And so, we plan to use this for debt. And the, the debt that's more than 600,000, we're, we're fine to, to continue with that with our, with our revenue projections and our sponsor, our sponsor agreements.
And then the, the project you were just mentioning, you plan to build out more tennis courts and the center?
We've done it. We, we've done it. It's there, we just have, the weather has pushed back the final painting of the, of the courts and the, some of the details, some, some more sidewalks, maybe some planting grass and we're gonna build a hitting, a practice wall, which is about $40,000. So, we do still have some smaller things to do, but we can do that out of our operating funds.
Okay. So, basically, this tax credit's mostly for debt service then?
That's the intent, yes.
Okay. And then how much do you project the, I guess, it's hard to say, so $40,000 for a wall and a very small amount?
Yeah. We, we have about another $100,000 worth of finished work to do, including the, including the, the wall.
Okay.
And then we have maintenance. We, we resurface the courts every, you know, three to five years and we, we have to still plan for these kind of maintaining the courts and the fences and the sidewalks and everything is, we, we are gonna be able to do that with our operating cash and our, the, the fees we charge for the courts and the membership, et cetera.
And have you sought alternate funding sources? To what extent have you maximized those funding sources? So, like for instance, you know, Association of Tennis Professionals, International Tennis Federation, the United States Professional Tennis Association, charitable gifting. So, what other alternate funding sources have you sought and maximized?
We've, we've received grants from the International Tennis Federation and the United States Tennis Association. The other organizations you mentioned are, the USPTA is, is for professional coaches. It's a, it's a coaches association and we've, we've, we've looked at different grants and different Olympic funding and different, different things. We, we've, we tried to get the, like I said, the community block, block grant development and we, we weren't successful at that. We wrote a really good grant, but we didn't get anything for that. We continue to look for opportunities and take advantage of whatever we can. I think your question was, have we maximized? I don't think so, but we've, we've done all we know of at the moment, but we will continue to, to try to improve.
Okay. Thank you. And then also, your financial, your business plan, can you talk about your business plan for 2022?
Business plan for 2022?
Yeah. Does the Guam National Tennis Center have a business plan in place?
Yeah. Well, I don't have a, a formal business plan that can present to you, but we, we do have our sponsors, sponsorship agreements in place, which I said is the court naming rights, as well as we have our membership and our, our, our funding from the, the court fees. That's where our revenue comes from, membership and court fees. We also have leagues and programs that we do that bring in funding to support the federation, which is not only the facility, it's also our development of juniors and programs for schools and, and things like this. So, we, as a, we as a federation have a, a mission of growing the sport. So, we have, we have funds that we need for that as well as funds that, that we need to, to maintain the, the tennis center.
And how much do you bring in cumulatively for that, those two major source, funding sources?
So, we have some, some court naming rights, sponsors paid the $100,000 upfront and we have, one, two, three, seven that are paying $10,000 a year, $70,000.
And membership and court fees?
Those are the court naming rights, sponsorships.
Okay. So, then roughly about 800,000?
70,000 total.
Oh, 70,000 total.
Yeah. 10,000 times seven. And some of them are expiring in 2008, or 2027 and some are expiring, some are 10, 10 more years. So, it'll be 2032.
Okay. So, yeah, it doesn't leave room for hiring a fundraising, I mean, it seems like you need somebody dedicated to focus on the financial planning and budget, budgeting as well as looking out for grants.
We, we have our volunteer board and we're all, we're all working on that all the time. Yeah. We're constantly looking for those things.
All right. Okay. So, is there an alternative to this bill? Do you foresee an alternative to this bill as far as providing the necessary funding to do debt service?
Yes.
There, there is an alternative?
Well, if we don't get the bill, we have to. We, we've committed and we, we can do it, but we're just asking for help.
Okay. And if that, what would the alternative look like?
What I just said. We look for more, we look for more grants, we find more sponsorships, we, we find a way to, to cover the, the debt. The, we have the, we have a revenue source. Interest is difficult, but the, the, the bank was confident to give us the, the loan and so, we, we do, we do have an alternative. We're asking for help.
Okay. And then it's, what is the interest rate of the bank?
5%.
5%. And is that, that's locked in? It's not gonna shift?
Yes.
It's pretty much locked in? Okay.
I, I believe there's a five-year review, which is coming up next year, but it's not a, it's, it's, it's not an adjustable rate.
Thank you for the responses. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Brown.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the questions by my other colleagues. It certainly allows me to continue on, but I wanted to ask, I mean, you, you already have the facilities built and you relayed that the bank has provided the financing. And so, what was the alternative? I'm, I'm not so much, you know, with regards to providing assistance to organizations like your organization that provides a important community contribution, but I also look in times that may be coming ahead of us when we have other critical priorities to address. Not that what you do isn't critical, but you know, I also know we have a number of school facilities on Guam outside of Simon Sanchez that are deteriorating. And when we as legislators have to prioritize spending, sometimes it means making tough decisions and, you know, essentially what we're doing is we're allowing, even though we call it tax credits, we're essentially appropriating or wanting, not a direct appropriation, but we're, we're taking $600,000 of what otherwise would be placed into revenues for the government to address those critical priorities and we're essentially providing that to your organization. So, what was the plan in the event you don't get this funding as, as, you know, Senator Sabina was asking? What is the alternative? Because that's, tax credits, as I mentioned during the public hearing, all of us can introduce this type of legislation for the things that we support, but it also takes the money out of general revenue funds, which really don't allow us to address other critical services in the government. Because businesses otherwise would be paying these taxes to the government. Now, we're saying businesses can provide these tax credits, fund the money directly to you and it never gets to our coffers to address other critical concerns. And I'm sure we all recognize, as we all say in campaigns, you know, education, public, especially these days, public safety, you know, for the needs of our police department and other critical needs. I mean, we hear the hospital's still leaking. So, I just wanted to ask, what, what was the plan? I mean, if the bank had, had already approved the loan, what was the collateral to address payment for your organization in the event you don't or didn't get this tax credit benefit from the government and from the taxpayers of Guam?
Well, I think, first of all, thanks for that. The, this $600,000 will be a, a capital improvement to, to the island. We've already done it and I think it'll keep people out of the hospital and, you know, in, in that way, we, we're offering a healthy alternative and, and we will maintain it. We're gonna keep it up. It's gonna be, it's, it's not a money that's just gonna be, be spent and gone. It's gonna, it's a capital improvement that's gonna last a long time. To answer your question about what's the alternative, the alternative is we committed to the, we committed to the bank to pay them and we have sponsors and we have, we, we have agreements where we can do that if we have to. can do that if we have to. We're, we're, again, we're asking for help. We see the, the racing and soccer and basketball, and these, these, these other sports organizations have been able to get these tax credits, so we wanted to see if we could get help also from this capital improvement that we've done for, for the, for the island and for the sport. So is there an alternative? Yes, we, we, we haven't, we haven't told the bank that, don't worry, we're going to get a tax credit and pay you. We've, we have sponsor agreements in place, and the, the collateral for the, the collateral for the loan is, or the, the guarantee is from the, the companies that have given us the, the sponsorship. Now, if you were to look at the sponsorship and, and the loan, the sponsorship money is going to run out before the loan is paid off based on the interest, and so there's an assumption that you're able to renew the sponsorship agreement, so this money will help us not have to do that.
What is the length of, of your loan? What is the timeframe of your loan, and what, what are you paying annually on that loan now?
It's, I think it's a twenty-year loan. I, I don't, I didn't bring it, I'm sorry, but we pay four thousand a month.
On that particular?
Approximately four thousand a month, yeah, and the interest rate is five percent, and the, the loan was seven hundred thousand dollars originally in two thousand nineteen.
And when, when did you build the facility?
We built phase one in two thousand nineteen and, and opened in February of two thousand twenty, and closed in March of two thousand twenty for COVID.
Okay, okay.
But we were able to, we were able to establish tennis as a safe distance sport and, and reopen, but, yeah, so two thousand twenty was a little bit challenging, but we've been open since February of two thousand twenty with, with a few months or weeks here and there where we weren't allowed to be open. And so we established that we were already, had, had such a demand, we went heading, went forward with phase two, and, and we're finishing up that now, so it's, it's been a good, it's been a good project and good for the tennis community and, and the public.
Well, thank you for that information. If I can ask, Gita, I know it was brought up during the public hearing also, what is the, what is the current amount right now that we have out for tax credits? I mean, you know, because I, I think at some point maybe we need to look at, maybe is there only a certain percentage of the overall possible revenues to the government and to the people of Guam that we should set aside for tax credits? Because I'll tell you, I'd, I'd just love to start putting all kinds of bills that I could put forth and, and do a tax credit, because we're not feeling the immediate impact when we're budgeting, because the money never gets to our door to appropriate for other critical needs. So how much do we have so far in this timeframe, and what percentage would that be of the current overall budget?
Well, Senator, please rest assured that no matter how many tax credits you authorize, Gita will be here to support you and manage it properly. But the total program amount, there have been about twenty-nine point seven million dollars worth of tax credits recorded since about nineteen ninety-eight. Disbursements made on those tax credits have been about eighteen point four million, which leaves a current balance of eleven point three million. Out of the eleven point three million, we do have a number of inactive tax credits, and let me, let me just, if you'll give me a moment, we have, where is that inactive? Oh, yes. One point, two point one, three point one, three point three, three point seven. We, we currently have about five million dollars out of the eleven point three million dollars that is inactive, unused, and at some point in time, we've, we've, I believe we've spoken about this in previous hearings, that we would, we would ask that there be a consideration to repeal, especially some of the older, outer, out of date ones. And so, all in all, the amount through FY twenty-three that can be drawn down on is nine point three million dollars. However, out of the nine point three, as I had mentioned, there's approximately five million that is, did I say five million? That's the number that we didn't add, five million that is inactive, so about four million outstanding. And then to add this would be, if it were two years, it would be four point three million, and then whatever's drawn down this year, and then next year, three hundred thousand as well. And four point three million, I would defer to my colleague at BBMR to answer what four, four point three is, as a proportion of the total budget.
Can I add something while they're looking for that? I just wanted to say that, that we, we understand this, this situation, and this is one of the reasons why, to Senator Taidi Gu's point about why not six hundred thousand all in one shot, we thought that spreading it out over multiple years would be more palatable to the, to the, to the budget. So that's why three hundred thousand over two years is, it was originally two hundred thousand over three years, but we wanted to move it up to three hundred over two years. But six hundred in one year would be great, but we, we, we feel like it's more.
But we're already, we're only spreading this out, as was mentioned earlier, now from three to two years, so now we're looking at taking three hundred thousand a year out of the
Understand.
Public coffer.
I'm, I'm, I'm just saying that.
I'm just curious, why, why don't we do it over a longer period of time, five years?
Because of, it's helped, it helps us with our interests, that's why. So that's why we asked to make it two years instead of three years.
Senator Brown, Mr. Smith has said that he has spent one point five million and got a loan for seven hundred thousand, that's two point three million dollars. By my calculation, he would have to have spent twelve million dollars with a five percent BPT divided, then you have to take off the three percent in order to get a maximum amount of two hundred and forty thousand dollars. I don't think Mr. Smith has spent anywhere near twelve million dollars in totality, so I think the, the amount here is more reflective of the loan amount than it is in the entirety of the cost associated with the design, construction, development, upgrade, repair, maintenance of the facility. If you calculate that cost in its entirety from soup to nuts, then we can look at what it is that we are going to be providing assistance to the Tennis Association for at the unplugged two percent rate. So I think the math here, even though it's well-intentioned, has, has got people thinking that we're going to allocate three hundred thousand, like what we did with the Harmon Industrial Park, where we netted out two hundred and fifty thousand every year for the duration of, I don't know, was it a million dollars amount? Something like that. So it was like over a four-year period. I don't think we're going to be touching anywhere near this amount of money.
If I recall, my question specifically had to do with, what was the overall percentage of these tax credits currently available in comparison to the overall budget? What is the percentage of the current overall budget are tax credits? I'm, I'm not questioning the validity or the importance or the significant contribution of the Tennis Association, I just wanted to get a general figure for ourselves and the public of, of what that is.
Maybe half of one percent?
We, we would concur with that answer, about point, point zero zero six.
Would you recommend a percentage be put in the budget on how much money we should set aside as a policy for tax credits, not just this project, but any other? Because again, I mean, I, I understand the significance and the position, and certainly the contribution of a tennis association, but I also look at the bigger picture, which I think we all have a responsibility to do, because we are diverting revenue that otherwise would come forth for the people to appropriate to what many will also consider. Not that the Tennis Association, the Basketball Association, or any of these football association, that it's not important. I think we all recognize the value that is, benefits the community. But at the same time, there is also going to be a list this upcoming year, as there is every fiscal year, of other critical needs. I mean, our people have relayed their constant concern about the crime issue on Guam. I'm sure there's more resources also that could be provided to the Guam Police Department. So I'm just wanting to inquire, do you think that would be a good policy position to actually maybe cap at some point the amount we divert from actual appropriation of the people's money?
Thank you, Senator. That's a very valid question, and I think I've spoken on the record about it in previous hearings, most recently concerning the Guam, the Football Federation, and it was, it was the suggestion of treating tax credits, assigning a limit, upper limit like a debt ceiling. And right now, point zero zero six of the total budget is still, one can argue that that's not a major impact to the budget. Having said that, what you're sharing is absolutely valid. Also, from the consideration of, of Gita, from at the agency level, every tax credit that is authorized, we, we have to expend time and energy and resources to, to perform the compliance functions. So for our lawmakers to look at tax credits like, you know, to, to, for pet projects and things along those lines, we'd like this to be a very seriously considered instrument of financing for organizations and especially, and for our nonprofits. And I think that, that would be good policy to have some type of tax credit ceiling that could be derived from, it, it doesn't have to be a tax credit ceiling like an actual dollar amount, but it could be something to the effect of, of a percentage of outstanding, the, the budget over the last three years, and a percentage of that, or something along those lines.
Thank you, thank you for your response. Thank you, Madam Chair, I'll, I'll continue the next round. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Ada? Senator Duñez? Senator Torres?
I have no questions. I just have a general comment, listening to everything. I, I truly understand and appreciate your request to have these tax credits granted, and I, I think that, what I want to point out is what we recognize also is that in addition to the burden of, of capital improvement and building, that the sustainability of the operation is always the major challenge after you get through that one threshold. And if, if this will facilitate and ease your burden so that your, your maintenance of the facility and sustainability of the, of the Guam Tennis Federation programs and long-term goals can be achieved, then, then I'm more than willing to support this bill, because I think after all, it, it's a bigger picture. It's beyond what you can achieve today. It's, once you get that facility up, the harder part is how do you, how do you maintain the facility and sustain your program? So it's that sustenance of the program that I know is a big challenge on Guam with maintenance, with the cost of goods, with the, even with the frequency, the demand on it, because you are the only facility, not only for residents, but for, for visitors. So with that, I, I applaud Gita for being able to manage and to understand, you know, that, that although this is an unusual setup, it, it in fact is a valid type of credit, and that, and that, this is one of those things where if we're really looking at how to improve Guam going forward, the infrastructure of Guam to include everything from recreation to other tourism niches, then, then, then this is one pocket that can be utilized in that way. So I just wanted to indicate my support for you, and, and also for taking the risk of, of looking for these types of tax credits. It's not always a straightforward sell, but if we keep an open mind to what that goal is, we support those investors who are willing to make that investment in Guam and to take the risks, oftentimes the personal risks and the, the personal contributions that you make towards it in time as well, towards the betterment of the island. So good luck to you.
Yeah, thank you, Senator. Also, on top of the maintenance and the things you mentioned, we're also able to keep the fees down, and three hundred sixty-five dollars for a, be able to play in a world-class facility is, is, is cheap, and that, this is going to help us maintain that. Thank you.
And, and you're absolutely right, because in Guam, where we are such a small market, oftentimes it, it, it costs more because we don't have that economies of scale also. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Senator Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just going to yield my time to the Speaker.
Thank you. Speaker Chirlaki?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Senator Nelson. I guess I could follow up with Mr. Carlson's estimates. The bill allows for up to six hundred thousand dollars in tax credits spread over two years, but you said we won't come close to that. Can you give us an estimate?
You know, I think what we need to do is get Mr. Smith to go back from the beginning, because he's only talking about the developments that he's begun over the last three, three years or so, but I'm sure that he had costs that were incurred prior to, like for the design before phase one was done, which he paid for, they paid for, and they have a loan out for the phase two portion. So if you were to take into consideration the entirety of what Tennis Association has spent and give them a tax break, I, I think unless it comes anywhere near twelve to fifteen million dollars, the five percent of twelve million dollars is the six hundred thousand, but we can only give the two percent, because the three percent is pledged for the bonds. So in, in theory, we could only give him, if he spent twelve million dollars, two hundred and forty thousand. So maybe we're, we're, we're talking about a tax credit when we should be talking about, going back to what Senator Brown said, maybe considering an appropriation, because the way that Senator Brown phrased it, which is actually pretty accurate, is that you netted out.
All right, well, none of that is contained in the fiscal note in the bill, which says...
It's not contained in the bill either.
Right. It says we're going to give six hundred thousand in tax credits, and I guess it wasn't in Gita's testimony either, so I'm going to ask Gita. Can you just, so this bill allows for tax credits to any business, to the extent that any business contributes to the actual cost of construction, development, upgrade, repair, or maintenance, which we've seen in other tax credits, or the debt service for the cost of the same. So if we're talking about debt service, can you just walk us through that? Who's actually going to get the tax credit on debt service? And how, how do you calculate that?
The tax credits will be given to the contributor as stated in the, in the bill, and if, as in previous tax credits, always to the contributor.
Who is the contributor for debt service? It says debt service.
Well, with this or any of the tax credits, the, the managing entity will be the one to seek out their contributors to make.
Sorry, I can't hear you. If we could, yeah, please speak louder or decrease the noise, yeah, please.
The entity that's running point on the tax credit programs will be responsible to seek their, seek out their contributors, to make the contrib, contributions for the development, upgrade, repair, et cetera.
I understand how those things work. I'm trying to ask Gita to explain how tax credits on the debt service is going to work.
Our function would just to ensure that the procurement is done, and all documents are in order, and following the, the rules and regulations.
are in order, and following the, the rules and regulations, and then issue the tax credit memo if, when appropriate.
Thank you. Director, I mean, CEO, Mendiola, have we ever issued tax credits for a company, a business that is contributing to the debt service?
In my, in my, in my time at GIDEA and the tax credits authorized, that we've had experience administering during my time at GIDEA, no. And from what I can see with the other tax credits, this would be, this would likely be a first, right? What'd you say?
Okay, yeah, the reason I ask is because, Mr. Smith, you can, when we, okay, so it wasn't too long ago we were in here for authorization of the lease for this property to the Federation, a lease that would allow them to encumber the property, put it under a mortgage, and get the financing that they needed. And that, that the legislature agreed to. So the property was designated to the Tennis Federation years ago, Public Law 31-67, specifically for tennis, for the Guam National Tennis Federation. It authorized a 50-year lease of the land, allowed the land to be encumbered by mortgage or other. And at the time, it said that the rent would be, because it was a non-for-profit, $1 a day. If it changed to a pro- a profit corporation, 10% of market value. So can you confirm if GNTF is still a not-for-profit? Mr. Smith?
Yes, we're still not-for-profit.
All right. And we willingly agreed the lease of the land, allowing it to be encumbered, so that you could, you know, have additional resources to, to borrow against and build the facilities for the people of Guam. And I commend all of the efforts that the Federation has made in allowing, you know, this tennis industry to, sport to grow. But the, the donors that you've described have already donated, and I guess how I've seen it work is, they can get the tax credits, they, so if they donated $600,000, they're going to get the BPT of, amount of that, which would be 2%, Mr. Somebody? Anyways, whatever they calculate to be the tax credit, not of that full amount, right? Is it equal to their donation?
Yes, Madam Speaker, it is equivalent, the tax credit is equivalent to their contribution to the project, in addition to processing, like a processing fee.
Okay, so it, so if they contributed 200,000, they would get tax credits in the amount of $200,000. So, Mr. Smith, they would be, these companies would be getting the credit, but that's not going to help you pay your loan.
Senator, those are separate agreements that have nothing to do with this tax credit. So those, those donors are not going to be seeking any tax credit. We've told them that this, this is not for, for them. It's, it's for the, the, our understanding is it's for future tax credits that we will be able to take advantage of, not the, not the, not the donations. The donations we have are donations, and they're getting what we agreed to with the, with the sponsorship naming rights agreements, or some of them just gave us money. But it, but we've, we've already told them, we're, we're talking to the legislature about this, and they will not be able to take advantage of that from their donations or their commitment for donations. All the donations haven't come in, but the commitment doesn't include tax credits. That's a, pay for, pay for a certain...
Right, so I'm just trying to find out, how is this tax credit operation going to help him pay off their loan?
Madam Speaker, this is the first, as this is, as this is the first, any sort of, there, there may be some different, the way that we, my colleague and I were discussing, the contributor to the loan payoff, so if you have a company, construction company, grocery store, whatever their function is, and they contributed a $70,000 payment towards the loan, they could come in for the tax credit. Now, the step that my colleague and I have, have not discussed that are, that would be under development upon authorization of, of this tax credit, would be matching the 70,000 to the amount of the loan assigned to principal versus the amount of the loan signed to interest. Because we're saying in this bill, debt service for the construction, development, upgrade, repair, or maintenance, or debt service, so it, will it be treated as a dollar, any, and we're going to assume that all of that money that went in for that loan was specific to construction, or was it all the money that went in was specific to construction and working capital? Because working capital is not stated in here. So if you put in a $70,000 payment, and that represents 10% of the outstanding loan balance, and 50% of the loan was utilized towards working capital, then we can only give you a tax credit towards 50%, towards the eligible expenses. So it would be a matching, the extra step in this particular tax credit, as we see it as presented in this bill, is that the tax credit itself, the actual paper, would go to the person that would be paying off the debt. However, the extent to which that tax credit amount is determined is the amount that was expend, that was spent in accordance with the language of, of the legislation.
Mr. Smith, do you know what that is, that percentage? What percentage of your loan meets the qualifications that GIDEA just described?
100%, all of it. We haven't used, we, we maintain separate bank account for our capital, our, our capital improvements and our operating, and we only use the capital account to pay for capital projects. No working capital at all.
And so are you expecting donors then to contribute to payment of the loan? Because those are the donors, according to GIDEA, that will be getting the tax credits?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Who are those? Are, I mean, are those settled already, or?
No.
You're going to solicit after this bill's passed?
Yeah, I think when the, when the bill's passed, we will work with GIDEA on, on procedurally how, how that works.
So could you give me an example? If they donated, they've got a $600,000 loan, if I wanted to donate it $600,000, I would get a, to payment of their loan, I get a $600,000 tax credit from the government of Guam?
Upon, yes ma'am, upon verification that the $600,000 loan was utilized for the purpose expressed in the legislation.
All right. So do you expect $600,000 then to be met, contrary to what Mr. Carlson said? He said we won't go near a 600,000. But if, if you're paying on the debt, then the debt 600,000?
I'm not sure if I, I don't believe that's, I don't believe that's what Director Carlson said, but do we believe that the 600,000 will be, do we, what we believe about the prospect of them finding a $600,000 donor?
No. Do you expect the government of Guam to incur $600,000 of credits? To give out $600,000 of credits? Because Mr. Carlson, or if you could clarify, I thought he said, we're authorizing 600,000, but for this amount of a project, 2.2 million, we're not going to get anywhere near that amount in tax credits. But now, yeah, do you agree? Yeah, it sounds like you're using different formulas.
I'm sorry, Madam, Madam Speaker, may you, would you repeat the last comment?
How much do you expect us to give out in credits, realistically, practically, based on what you know about this project?
I think that if you authorize 600,000, you should be prepared to expend 600,000. That's what we prepare ourselves for. But to what extent the 600,000 is drawn down upon by the donors and by the organization is largely a function of the organization's ability to mobilize the donors.
Mr. Smith, what, what is your current plan to pay the debt? What, do you have money pledged already to that purpose?
Our, our current plan without this bill?
Yes.
We have the, the court naming rights sponsor agreements, and like I said, like I said earlier, we have revenue from membership, and we are not banking on this 100%. We're trying to get help, and if we don't get help, okay.
I know. Well, we're trying to help you, just trying to find out how it's actually going to work.
We'll, we'll make it. We'll, we'll have, we'll have more promotional things. We'll, we'll figure out ways to make more money. We'll increase court fees, we'll increase membership, we'll, we'll raise enough revenue to do it. It's, it's, it's possible for us. We're, we're not, we're not up against it here, but...
Yeah.
And, and in terms of the, the 600,000, I'm, I'm confident that we will have businesses that, that can help us with using the tax credits.
All right. If you pay, if he pays the loan from fees, membership fees, so membership fees are paid to your nonprofit, the nonprofit is what's paying, who's paying the loan, who gets the tax credit? The members?
No one.
No one? Because they're a nonprofit? Because they have no taxes credit, that they need credit for?
Because the contributor, technically, Madam Speaker, you can, as an individual contributor, paying $365 a year, you can come to GIDEA for a $365 tax credit, but then you'd probably have to pay the $500 processing fee, so it wouldn't make sense. So it would largely be a corporate, it would be a corporate donor or not at all. That would just be, to me, a business decision made by the organization.
Okay, so just to clarify one more time, Mr. Smith, so you do expect to solicit corporate donors now that, if this bill passes, that you can entice them with the tax credits to pay off this fast, the loan faster? To save yourself the interest?
Yes, we have some businesses in mind. We haven't approached them or solicited it yet, but we have some...
And the 700,000 is like a balance, or 600, now, is it, 700 is a balance now? That includes interest, or is that a separate?
It, it's more than 600,000, but the, the, more than 600,000, we're okay with. We also got some SBA loan money, so that's, that's a very good term, so we're not worried about that. What we're, what we're trying to pay off is the, is the original bank debt, and part of the debt we've incurred to finish the Phase Two. And we're confident we have some businesses that will help us.
Okay, and is interest eligible?
From our perspective in the bill, it says, or debt service for the cost of the same, as long as the interest can be attributed to construction, development, upgrade, repair, or maintenance, then it would be eligible per this, my, my interpretation of this legislation.
All right. Okay, I just want to know...
We don't anticipate paying any interest with, with this, because we'll just pay the principal.
Okay, great. Mr. Carlson, I think you're the only one on this panel who might be able to answer this question, but, you know, there are other tennis courts in need of repair. These are the public ones, right? Agania and Timoni? And I just want to ask you, because I don't recall if, if there is any money appropriated for repair of those facilities in our budget, or through the ARP funds, or the infrastructure funds, or GIDEA's loans, or anything?
I'm not aware of any assistance for the Naneti Tennis Center that's in Agania, and the one that we have in Tezen, no. I'm, I'm not aware of any...
Or Timoni?
There's one in Timoni?
Timoni is also public, yeah. All right.
I'm not aware, ma'am.
Okay. Are you, Director Mendiola?
No, ma'am, but I would suggest you turn it over to the Guam National Tennis Federation, as they seem highly competent in running tennis courts.
Well, they're building them just so we are as well, but then they come for credits, it's a whole different story, right? That's, that was not discussed when we authorized the leases and all of this. So it was a surprise to me, and, you know, we've got infrastructure money, and I want to know, that's why I wanted to know, if any of that will be used for sports facilities or not. Gura seems to have denied the Tennis Federation. I think Gura funded the Sinonias' sports facilities, yes. Mr. Smith?
Yes, Senator, the Agania, the Agania, the four courts at Agania were recently refurbished and renovated, I think it was 2020 or 2021, and I think there was...
I know they have lights now.
Several hundred thousand dollars went into that.
There's been maintenance, yes, that's government and Guam-funded, right?
I'm not sure where the, where the government funding came from to do that, but there, there was significant funding put into that project.
Right, but I'm just, I know that they always require continuing maintenance.
I don't, I don't know of any, anymore.
Yeah, so that one, those have, yeah, I know that they do have lights, because the inter-scholastics now play there. And so we talked about, so I just want to clarify, so you, you, when you said 1.5 million dollars, and that the borrowing was 700,000, those two together, it's not 700,000 of the 1.5 million? So your total for Phase One and Phase Two is about 2.2 million?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And Phase Two's completed now? Almost.
Just about, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So I see that the bill added some language here for public, it says, shall allocate time during which the public may utilize the facilities in accordance with the rules adopted by the Guam National Tennis Federation. And you described to us that there is, they're allowed to use it, they reserve it, and they pay for use, and they pay for use, they reserve it, it sounds like the members have first dibs on the reservations though, they get to reserve earlier. And when the lease of these, this land, this government land was authorized, there was a plan that GNTF had, you know, presented to the legislature. It's your plan, your plan of how you were going to proceed, and it described serving low to moderate income segments of the community. It says it would not be a country club for the elite, free clinics from time to time, school visits will encourage kids to participate in tennis programs, low to moderate income kids will have scholarship opportunities, and of course, provide venues for local and international development programs, which you've described, it is being done, high-level facility for those tournaments as well. These other, these others from the list are, have, has GNTF been able to accomplish those as well?
Yes, we're doing all those things.
Okay.
And it was brought up by Senator Duennas at the public hearing, and about the...
DYA?
DYA, and, and that was added to the bill, that we would do at least two programs specifically for the, for the DYA, but...
Right, so it says, work in partnership to host two annual tennis clinics per year to the clients of DYA. Two tennis clinics per year.
Thank you, Speaker.
My time?
Yes, your time's up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. That completes the first round of questions for the panel. We'll move into the second round now. Senator Tydeley, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Smith, when I asked that, the last question on, on the loan, you know, to pay it off right away, the 600, have you estimated how much it would cost, that would it be less than 600 if we were to give you the money upfront, and you were to pay off the loan?
It would still be 600. We have more than 600 in debt. So we, we would still use all 600 to pay.
If you were to pay it off, like in two months?
Yeah, like, like I said, we, we understand this is how these bills work, that it's over time, so that's why we're, we're fine with that, and we asked...
I'm just thinking of interest-wise, you know, if you were to...
Yeah.
Pay this off in two months, let's say, you know, the bill passes, and after time we find some funding to, to appropriate the full amount to you, or the 600, you're saying that even though if you're given the 600,000, you still have more debt that you would have to cover?
Yes, but it's not a problem. The interest we pay is about 30,000 a year.
In interest?
In interest.
That's still quite a bit.
But we can handle it, but...
But two years is 60 grand, correct? But two years is sixty grand, correct?
Right, but we, we anticipate it would be one year, and of course, that thirty will go, will go down significantly with a three hundred thousand dollar um, reduction of principal.
True, true, so the first year.
Yeah.
Three hundred, I mean thirty, well, yeah, thirty, thirty grand, so you would probably.
Probably be half.
About fifty grand, almost total in two years, if you were to um, go this route, right?
Depending on how quickly you can pay off the first three hundred thousand, but yes.
What bank are you using?
Uh, the loan's with Bank of Guam.
Okay. Um, so, okay, so even if you were to pay it off, at least you'd be saving almost fifty thousand dollars?
Yeah, if, if we could.
In interest, right?
If this bill is, if, if this bill is law, and we can, uh, I'm not sure how long the GIDEA process to, to start the, um, to, to actually get some funding, but um, sooner the better, and we can, we can knock off probably half of the interest with the first uh, with the first year of uh, payment, which we can probably get in the first several months, I'm not sure how quickly that is going to turn around, I don't know what that process is. But, yeah, we'll, we'll save significant interest even with the two-year plan, if it was one year, obviously, we save all the interest, but.
All the interest, which is almost sixty grand if you were to, if you were paying thirty, thirty thousand dollars a year in interest? And then even if though you were to get some of it paid off this year, you're still paying a lot of interest?
We are, and like I said, we've uh, we've planned for that, um, this will just help us, so.
Okay, um, that's, that's all my questions, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Titeguy. Senator Perez?
Thank you, Madam Chair, so just um, clarification, so you owe over six hundred thousand dollars for the construction of the.
Yes.
Tennis facilities, okay, and for the five percent interest, and when was this loan taken out, what year was it?
Uh, seven hundred thousand was taken in two thousand nineteen, during the first phase of construction, and then we uh, have another uh, two hundred thousand that we um, borrowed just at the end, um, September, October.
Oh, you borrowed additional two hundred thousand?
Yeah.
Okay, and then?
To, to, to fini, to pay the contractors of the, of the finishing of phase two.
Okay, and so, but currently you have now, what is the balance?
Uh, the, the Bank of Guam is about four hundred, plus the uh, plus the uh, the two hundred, it's a little over six hundred, and then we have an SBA loan too, but that's, that's a loan that we're happy to um, carry.
And the two hundred is with which bank?
Personal notes.
Personal notes, what, so the, basically you owe an individual?
Me.
Oh, you, okay.
Me and another one of our board members uh, loaned the money to the, on, on a note.
Is there interests associated with the personal notes?
Yes.
How much?
Three percent interest.
And with the Bank of Guam, it's five percent?
Yes.
What about the SBA?
SBA is uh, three and a quarter, I think.
So you, you borrowed about nine hundred, but now you're down to six hundred?
Yeah, we, we accelerated the Bank of Guam payments um, to give us some relief on the interest.
Okay, otherwise, what is the installments for the loan?
The, the, the uh, Bank of Guam is four thousand dollars.
Four thou, four thousand a month?
It's approximately four thousand a month.
A month, okay, and then what about the um, personal notes?
Zero.
Zero, so you just hold off, basically, until, and what about SBA, what is that a month?
SBA, I don't think we've started paying yet, it's, it's one of those programs that it, the, the payment's deferred, it's going to be um, twelve hundred a month. It's a really long uh, amortization period, I think thirty years.
Okay, and what about the Bank of Guam, what is that?
Bank of Guam, I believe is a twenty-year amortization.
Twenty years, okay. So there is, so basically you take in seventy thousand a year, right? Is that what you said earlier, I just want to clarify?
Yeah, it, uh, that's what we have now, um, originally, um, we had uh, we had court naming rights uh, for eight uh, courts. Some donors paid all of the money upfront, and some decided to pay ten thousand a year for ten years. Some of the, some of those that, that chose that accelerated and paid, and helped us pay it earlier, so um, they're different. And then the five new courts we have have uh, five new sponsors, court naming sponsors.
So then how much are you taking in, like, this year?
Next year will be seventy thousand.
Seventy K, okay, so there, there is, you can afford these installments?
Yeah, for a time.
Yeah, for the time until you get more sponsorships?
Yes, because the, uh, of the seventy, um, some of it's expiring uh, in ten years from two thousand eighteen or nineteen? So twenty twenty-eight, and some of them are going to expire in twenty thirty-two, twenty thirty-three. It's, it, it varies on when the sponsorship starts.
Okay, but, so basically you're solvent, you have the means to pay the installments?
We are solvent.
Okay, and as far as operational costs, what is your operational cost?
Um, we have uh, we, we have a facility director that um, we, we pay a salary of uh, twenty-four thousand, and then part-time staff that is about uh, also two thousand a month, and maintenance.
Okay, so do you, are you running in the black then, with the operational cost and uh, debt service? Or is it in the red?
Yes, like I said, we, we have the um, we, we have revenue from the, the membership, the court fees, and some programs we run to, to um, help with the operational costs.
Okay.
The court, the court naming sponsorship uh, funding is meant to pay the uh, the debt, and not operations.
Okay, so then, basically, the money that you're, you're bringing in is enough to pay the debt, as well as.
For now.
Maintain the courts.
For now, yes.
For now, okay, so if you want to do anything additional, uh, then that would require additional fundraising?
Sorry, can you say that again?
To, to do additional, like, capital improvements, that would require additional fun.
Yes.
Fundraising.
Yeah, and, and like I said, the, because of the interest, the, the, the sponsorship money's going to run out before the debt is paid, so we need to, we'll, we'll need to uh, renew these sponsorships or things like that, so that's why this um, this tax credit will help us to um, have this paid off in ti.
Okay, yeah, you mentioned twenty twenty-two, one's going to expire in twenty twenty, what's the, the closest one?
Twenty twenty-eight.
Twenty twenty-eight, and that's how much worth, how much?
Thirty thousand a, thirty thousand a year.
Okay, and then the one that's in twenty thirty-one?
Twenty thirty-three would be forty thousand a year.
Forty K, okay.
And we have one more court that we can sell for court naming rights, if anyone's interested.
Okay, yes, uh, we were advertising for sponsorship for the Guam National Tennis Federation. Um, okay, great, uh, question for, I guess, GIDEA, if you can provide, you know, maybe you already have it on your website, but if you can provide the, what you were mentioning earlier about the uh, tax credit balance sheet.
I believe it's in your committee report, ma'am.
It's committee report, okay, all right.
We also have a copy here, if you'd like to make a copy?
Okay, perfect, perfect, thank you. Uh, well, thank you for uh, the question, answering the questions, Sis Massey.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Perez, Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, I don't have too many more questions, but I did want to comment, I think it probably leaves the opportunity for future legislation, because if we're going to go down this road of, of continuing to provide these type of tax credits, I think it's helpful. Certainly, I think in the case of the Tennis Federation, actually bringing to the table their contribution and their share of investment, versus the expectation that um, you know, the public essentially is going to be providing the full amount uh, in contributing to these facilities. I mean, I understand the importance and the contribution, definitely, that it makes back to the community, but, you know, we do have a number of public facilities that continue to stay in disarray, and we don't have to look very far, the Agania Swimming Pool is a very good example of a public facility that, for whatever reason, you know, has been allowed to deteriorate, while some say, well, you know, it's, it's sinking into the ground, or whatever the case may be, but it's almost going on close to three, almost four years, where that particular facility uh, has not been addressed, I mean, you drive by it every day, and while they say, you know, they're, they're assessing it, uh, that's an awful long time, also for sports organizations, swim organizations, a number of them, including people like me, that on a regular basis used to go to the Agania Swimming Pool and, and be able to go there to exercise and swim. So I just think, you know, it's important we recognize that, it's a benefit, if this bill moves forward, that we're providing to the Tennis Federation, I mean, they, they've certainly put a lot of investment themselves into the process, but at the same time, we need to be mindful, there are a number of public facilities, although the government has direct responsibility for, to which we are not providing anywhere near the amount of resources in maintaining these facilities, or even in the case of, of the uh, Agania Swimming Pool, at least we haven't heard anything lately, on what action's going to be taken, is a new facility going to be built, is, you know, what is the assessment, can it be repaired? Uh, but we just need to be mindful of this, because again, when we take away and give for one, we're generally taking it away from, from other uh, critical projects that also provide very similar contributions to our community, but thank you also for the Guam Federation, for their initiative and for being here, and thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you very much, Senator Brown, Senator Ada?
Yeah, I have no questions.
Thank you, Senator Duñez?
Sis Massey, Madam Chair, I have no questions either, but I just wanted to also offer a comment, I mean, I, I certainly do uh, respect the comments of my colleagues, and, you know, trying to be cognizant of basically the people's money, certainly in the general fund, and, and that, that's, that's always to be admired in what we should be doing here. However, in this case, I, I just really see um, maybe an example of a, of a real commitment, uh, you know, to, to carrying out um, this responsibility, and, and uh, it's kind of interesting, because yes, we can look at it a couple of different ways of, you know, upfront, you know, versus, um, you know, wow, you built it already, and then we're going in and doing this, I don't know, for me, I kind of like that. You put up, right, you, you, you put up, you showed your, your genuine commitment to it, and, and I do agree with my other colleague as well about maintenance and, and upkeep, and, and of course, of facilities that haven't been, but, but the fact that your commitment, and I always hear good things about uh, the courts and what folks are doing. I really do too, agree with, you know, the, the fact that, there's no question about it, I mean, this is a capital improvement, and something that, you know, I think the government shows a good responsibility of public-private partnership with, you know, getting with organizations that have the initiative, the wherewithal, have a, a fee structure that they manage to maintain and keep this up based on usage, I mean, it's, it's a good model, and so if anything, my comfort is, is the fact that we always in this body pride ourselves in investments, as should be, in capital improvements, because, especially those that directly serve the people. Uh, Torgan, I really agree with you too, on the fact that, you know, those that are geared towards, you know, uh, entertainment, of course, or sports, people, a lot of people pay sports, you know, for the fun of the sport, but also the collateral benefit, of course, is, you know, the, the exercise in health and wellness, so, uh, overall, you know, we, we're going to always have to vet policies, but I just want to be on the record saying that, as I watch this go through, uh, that I, I see the commitment, and I see the organization as well put together, and, and has put the money upfront, and, and is looking at this to be able to manage it going outwards, and, and also have an attractive capability of getting other individuals involved, wanting to invest in it, knowing that also their corporate tax dollars are going to something that they would have otherwise paid into the government, but a benefit to uh, to uh, you know, a community project that has that public-private ben, benefit. Also, I want to thank you and thank Chairman, uh, the author of the bill, uh, that, you know, you, we did, and, and it was very responsive in you uh, taking on the responsibility and the challenge of providing these services, at least uh, clinics, at least twice a year, to the Department of Youth Affairs, you know, which is something near and dear to my heart, simply because I've seen what sports and engagement in sports and education transformation can do uh, for young people's potential, so, I'm, I'm definitely going to hold you to it, I'm sure you're good for it, but uh, I'd really like to see the results of that too. Uh, yeah, I think you'll be surprised, um, some of those young people up there that found themselves in hard times, uh, have a lot of abilities, abilities outside, and maybe they have challenges with education, but they're very, you know, uh, a lot of them are, are very talented in different ways. I know the basketball courts up there and other things, other instrumentalities have provided, um, you know, musical instruments and different things, and whatever it takes to spark an interest in a young person who's gone the wrong direction, turn around, I think is a good thing, so I want to thank you for that as well. I'll continue to listen, but I just really believe that um, you know, this is a worthy, worthy investment. So with that, Madam Chair, I just wanted to be able to express those comments, Sis Massey.
Thanks, Senator, and yeah, more, more people we can get a racket in their hand, the better, we, I never know where we can find a, some, some talent. I, I, just before the public hearing, I was testifying that we were going to Bahrain for the Davis Cup, and, and our, our team did very well, we just got the world rankings results, and we went from one hundred forty-four to one hundred seventeen, twenty-seven places jumped up, so, it's, the, 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 it, it's, it's paying off.
Very nice, congratulations, Senator Torres? Thank you, Speaker Turlahe?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Smith, um, could you just remind us of, what is the current rule regarding public use for the organization?
We're open to the public for uh, for a fee, twenty dollars per hour at the prime time, and ten dollars per hour at the non-prime time, which is, non-prime time is like nine to four.
What is the um, and, and how much reservation do they, are they allowed to make per night?
Uh, members, uh, members and non-members are the same, is, for singles, it's uh, one hour, and for doubles, it's uh, an hour and a half.
No, I mean, if, is there time allocated for public versus members, what if the members take up all the slots?
Then the non-members have to play at the non-peak times.
Okay, yeah, and.
But, Senator, we, we've added the five courts, so um, we think that that's going to uh, open up more opportunity for, for the public, as well as more members, we, I think we lost out on some memberships because of the, the demand for the courts, and when we have eleven courts, we'll have much more time, all the time, prime time, and uh.
All right, well, yes, you know, I'm, yeah, it's just, I, I believe when we use the government land, and we, again, on top of that, add tax credits, that we should ensure that public access will be maintained, the bill says, subject to your rules, and um, you know, I, I, we can't control those here unless we know what they are, and um, and I, I don't really want, I, I mean, I want there to be access without payment for the public, for example, as I discussed with you earlier, you know, the Department of Education usage for their um, their leagues, I'm trying to remember the name of the sports league, and the uh, the tennis, you know, they have tennis tournament, the tennis leagues, and they have, I'm sure, classes, right? And so, I wanted to amend the bill to allo, allow them to use the facilities for free, of course, in accordance with your rules, meaning, you know, you can't have this kind of activity on it, you have to, you know, treat the facilities this way, all of that, but, but not the fees part. Would, would you be open to that?
I don't think so.
You don't want to allow GDOE to use it without fee?
Well, uh, I think we could, we could uh, make arrangements of at certain times, but to, to say without fees, uh, I, I think we have to be careful that uh, GDOE, DOE might come and say, we want to play our high school tennis matches at, you know, four to six on five courts or something, so. So I think to say DOE can use the courts for free, we'd have to be specific about the times and the amount of usage. The $600,000 tax credit is not even a 50% of the, of the, of the overall cost and so our other stakeholders might have issue with that too. I don't know that, you know, our board might want to have something to say about that or the other donors who had paid $100,000 and things like this. So I think it's possible to do something like that, but a blanket DOE can use the courts for free is difficult.
Well, we discussed the time period and this is what was done and when, it's very similar with the soccer organization, right? They also are using government land and they create, they develop the facilities and then in the newest lease that we did during this term, I believe that was this term, yes, we've put in a language in there that they are going to allow GDOE to use that for practice and for their intercollegial, of course, within time because they need the fields during their prime time as well.
I think, I think something could...
So I think it was limited to 4:00 PM, you know, before 4:00 PM.
Yeah, I think something could be worked out like that where during non-prime time, because like I said, we encourage people to play tennis, so the more people playing, the better.
Right. That's supposed to be the whole thing, right? Is to develop this sport with, not just, you know, private, but with the public schools, I'm hoping.
Yeah.
Up there in Dedido in particular, from nine to 4:00 PM perhaps, when that's not your non-peak time.
Yeah, I think we'd have to figure out some kind of window because I think we'd still want to have staff there to manage the use, but I think something can be worked out.
All right. And yeah, so this is the first time that they're, you know, we're entertaining a proposal to, to give tax credits for payment of debt, right? And, you know, I'm all for the benefits of it, however, BBMR and their fiscal note said, although the intent of the bill is beneficial in general, applying any tax credits to business privileged taxes will likely result in reduced financial resources for government programs and services. It seems so much easier to meet to the government, for the government of Guam, to just collect the $600,000 in taxes and allocate it straight out to, we'll pay for the court and, you know, we'll pay for you to develop one court for the public and make it free for them, right? Put their name on it because it is their land and $600,000 in credits is not nothing for them. You can really improve GDOE facilities with that amount. So I don't have any criticism of your organization, they're doing stellar and, you know, definitely I've seen the high demand of the use of those courts. So I just want to ensure that, you know, that that was, I think, the original intent of allocating this land towards your organization was that it's for the public and the public's going to be able to use it always. And I just don't want it to get out of reach because of, you know, they can't make a reservation, you know, or, or of course because of the costs. And when we're talking about GDO students, I just think the cost for them is critical.
May I make a comment?
Sure.
On section page three of my copy, section 771 303, cap on business privilege tax credits for construction, development, design, repair, or maintenance of the Guam National Tennis Federation facilities. The words debt service are not carried in this section and I believe that's what Mr. Smith is asking us to do. So if we could add for the debt service incurred in around line 21 as well as in the title of that section, I think the question was asked if a donor came in, gave $100,000 to pay the debt down, that donor would be the recipient of the credit. And I think that's at the end of the day what he's asking for.
Yeah, because it's provided in 771 302, the debt service. That's why we asked GDA. I think this was never...
Yes, but when you put the cap, you didn't...
Right. No, I understand it should be carried throughout the bill if that's the intent. Yeah. Again, yeah, we'll see how that works. So right now, we're told that the sponsors are, who's got their names up on these courts are GTA, Shirley's, Dusset, Calvo's, Quality Distributors. So they're paying for your debt service right now and you're going to try to renew agreements, maybe there's more. You're going to try to renew agreements with either these sponsors or other sponsors and put their names up on the wall to pay the debt and then they get the tax credits as well. All right.
Thank you very much, Speaker.
If you could answer.
Yes, you can.
Those sponsors who have committed prior are not going to get the tax credits. That's a separate agreement. So we anticipate it'll be new sponsors. They may want to give us tax credits in addition, but not for the money already committed.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you to the panel. Sisus Massey.
Sisus Massey, Speaker, thank you very much to the panel. That completes round two of questions. We will now take a brief recess to dismiss the panel.
We are back from recess. We are now on round three, which is on the amendments portion. We will start with Speaker Terlahe. Speaker Terlahe, you are recognized. Or do you want?
It's fine. I have amended. Well, on the bill, I would just like to say, I am, you know, I was surprised that the bill is allowing credits for financing, although I understand the rationale, but it's really not, not our usual way of giving credits for actual construction and things that the government did not have money to pay for itself. I feel like the $600,000, it would have been easier for the government to just appropriate that out, dedicate one court to the government's use, to the public's use, to the education, to the students' use, and, you know, or something like that. But I, I would like to amend the bill to add subsection B, which is, which would read, oh, sorry, this is amendment B 327. I don't know why it says SPNLPCTW. But it's supposed to be as a condition for the Guam National Tennis Federation and its contributors to be entitled to tax benefits of the program established in this article. The Guam Tennis Federation shall grant access to the Guam Department of Education the usage of the facilities for tennis or pickleball classes or for intrascholastic league tennis practices negotiated by the parties, weekdays from 9:00 to 4:00 p.m. during the school year at no charge, subject to advanced scheduling. Nothing herein shall prevent GDUE from allowing charter schools' usage of the facilities during the allocated time. This is similar to the language that we put in for the, for the use of government property for the new soccer fields that are going up in Ordot, and I believe Talafufo or other places, just to, just to allow, when they say "public use," to actually put that into some concrete terms as well. So that would be my amendment.
Sajid Smasi, Speaker. On the amendment, on the Terlahe amendment. Terlahe amendment. Speaker, would you like to close? On the amendment, are there any objections? Hearing none, amendment passes. The next amendment we have is from Senator Sinagastin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The amendment would be found on B 327, JSSA L 20 P 3. And that would be the, to amend sections 7, 7, 1, 3, 0, 3. The amendments I'm proffering, the two amendments were all discussed and was generally agreed upon to make the changes, okay? That's what I'm introducing. You'll find on line, line 20, page 3, is to change the, the word there, the, or add the word "the" against "the," on pledged business privacy tax, the word "the." And then further down, you'll find "or the debt, the debt service incurred," to add those two words. That was discussed in first and second mention. Okay?
On this Sinagastin amendment, Senator Blazi, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I guess I propose an amendment, to the amendment, in that after the words "or the debt service incurred," changing the word "of" to "by," because I can see where the use of the letter, the word "of" is, was there, because the last word that was supposed to be there was maintenance of, but the debt service incurred of the Guam. So I guess my, my amendment is change the word "of" to "by," and I'd like to, does that need for me to submit, or can it be technically taken care of by legal? It's just, it's just grammatically correct.
Is there any objection to amending without? Okay, hearing no objections, will allow for the amendment to change the word "of" to "by."
Yes, ma'am.
So the amendment now reads "or the debt service incurred by the Guam National Tennis Federation Court." Okay, thank you very much, colleagues. On the amendment, on the amendment, Senator Song, would you like to close? Thank you, or, oh, Senator Brown.
Thank you. I just want to ask a question of the sponsor on this amendment, Madam Chair, just for clarification, if he's open to it.
Please state your question.
On the second line of this amendment, it says "or the debt service incurred." Are you talking about debt service that has already been paid? Are you talking about what they still anticipate having to pay forward? I'm trying to understand the Fino English here.
Madam Chair, my understanding in our discussion with the folks, they, they wanted to include the debt services incurred, which is what they had, so they can at least pay some of that off, and then moving forward. That's my understanding, and that's why I included the amendment.
I just, I'm, I was listening to the presentation, and I assume that this remaining $600,000 is what they need to pay, and that it was being reduced to two years to reduce the amount of interest. But the way I read it, it sounds like this can be used to credit for money that's already been paid. So I just need to get that clarified, because, I mean, I assume we're moving forward with what they have yet to do versus what they've already, or what has already been paid or invested into the facility. So I just need clarification. Which is it?
Madam Chair, I understand your question. My understanding is that it's like what Gita brought up, until they give the receipts, and they pay it going backwards, they give the tax credit, and that's my understanding of this. So, but I understand where this is coming from. Is it going forward? That's what initially it was intended for. But because of the discussion, they wanted to make sure cover other items that they do have currently, that would reduce the, whatever else they have to pay. Because it still ends up being $300,000 a year, no more than $600 for two years.
Well, I understand, but I think we just need to be mindful, then, we're already looking at paying or contributing to what debts they've already encumbered. That, I'm just concerned about that. I mean, I'd hope moving forward with what they haven't addressed, but we're looking now at going back and paying what, what they've already acquired. I, I just don't feel clear with this amendment, exactly what's involved with a debt service incurred, Madam Chair, so I'm going to object just on that basis, because I don't have a clear idea of what that means versus monthly debt or debt over the next year or two, or the two-year period moving forward, as new money. Because I am concerned in the future, we can have a whole bunch of organizations showing up knocking on our doors, now asking us to go back and pay debts that they have obligated themselves to, with the expectation that the people of Guam are supposed to pay that. So I'm going to object to it. Thank you.
There's been an objection to the Sinagastin amendment. On the amendment, anyone else wishing to discuss? Would you like to close, Senator Sinagastin? All those in favor of the Sinagastin amendment, please signify as amended, the amendment as amended. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Amendment fails. Senator Sinagastin, you are still recognized.
Okay, on the next amendment, it's referring to the, it's on line seven and nine, page three, is to add the word after the debt service previously incurred. There's those two words to be added, previously incurred.
Thank you, Senator Sinagastin. On the Sinagastin amendment, Senator Titegui.
Are we still on the amendment on line 20, page three?
We are now, we, we passed that amendment already. We are now on the Sinagastin amendment to line seven.
Okay.
And nine, page three.
Okay, Madam Chair, I don't have a copy of that.
Okay.
Can I get a copy, please?
On the Sinagastin amendment, to discuss. On the amendment, is there any discussion on the amendment? Are there any objections? There's been an objection to the amendment. Senator Sinagastin, would you like to close? There's been an objection. All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by raising your hand. We have exhausted all the amendments. Senator Sinagastin, you are recognized.
Is this, this is to close and propose? Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I moved that bill 327-36, as amended by the Committee on General Government, Operation, and Housing, and further amended in the Committee of the Hole with the recommendation of the Committee, the Hole to be placed on the third reading file.
Thank you. On the motion with the recommendation of the Committee of the Hole to place bill number 327-36-COR as amended on the third reading file, are there any objections? Hearing no objections, motion... There's been an objection. All those in favor of placing, of placing bill number 327-36 as amended on the third reading file, please signify by raising your hand. Please signify by raising your hand. Motion fails. We are in recess.
The Committee of the Hole is back from recess. Senator Sinagastin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I ask that the, uh, my colleagues reconsider the action of the Committee, the Committee of the Hole.
On the motion to reconsider the actions of the body, on Bill 327-36COR as amended, are there any objections? Hearing none. Hearing none, motion passes. Senator Sinagastin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a, an amendment. It's, uh, notwithstanding the House rules that I introduce this amendment, uh, it's on line seven, nine, page three, is to change, uh, add the word currently owed after the word or the debit, the debt service. To add the word currently owed.
On the Sinagastin amendment. On the Sinagastin amendment, are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Senator Sinagastin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that Bill 327, that has 36 C O Rs amended by the Committee on General Government Operations Appropriations and Housing, and further amended in Committee of the Hole with the recommendation of the Committee of the Hole to be placed on the third reading file. And I'd like to, can I also add at this point, additional consequences? Or it has to be after? No, can't? Never mind.
You need to make it before the recommendation so you can...
No, we'll just follow the end of recommendation. We will move on.
Okay, thank you very much. On the motion with the recommendation of the Committee of the Hole to place Bill Number 327-36COR as amended on the third reading file, are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 327. We'll take a moment to recess. The Committee of the Hole is back from recess. We are now on Bill Number 298-36LS, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations Appropriations and Housing, an act to amend Section 4A of Public Law 34-70, as amended by Section 2 of Public Law 35-44, relative to the financing or refinancing improvements and capital improvements of the Jose D. Leon Guerrero Commercial Port and other related facilities and operations of the port through revenue bond proceeds. I now call upon the panel guests for the Sergeant-at-Arms to swear in. Please rise.
Stand and raise your right hand. Under penalty of perjury, you all affirm that any and all information you provide today, whether it be verbally, electronically, and in writing, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. Madam Chair, under oath, you may proceed.
Seduce is Mossy, Sergeant-at-Arms. Senator Nelson, you are recognized. Or we'll have the panel introduce themselves first, starting from my right.
Off day, Tina Garcia from the Guam Economic Development Authority, Public Finance Division.
Good afternoon, Melanie Mendiola, Guam Economic Development Authority.
Good afternoon, Roy Rispicio, General Manager of the Port Authority of Guam.
Good afternoon, Joe Havelana, Chief Planner at the Port Authority of Guam.
Good afternoon, Clarence Leguteng, CIP Manager, Port of Guam.
Seduce is Mossy to the panel. Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, Bill Number 298-36LS is an act to amend Section 4 Alpha of Public Law 34-70, as amended by Section 2 of Public Law 35-44, relative to the financing or refinancing improvements and capital improvements of the Jose D. Leon Guerrero Commercial Port and other related facilities and operations of the port through revenue bond proceeds. Illicitor in Guam finds that the Jose D. Leon Guerrero Commercial Port's modernization program is designed to meet the island's growth, including the expansion of the U.S. military and the growing tourism market with the key project initiatives as justified to the bond market investors, which follows: A, expansion of WARP space to accommodate larger vessels and increase vessel handling capacity; B, upgrade and container tracking, financial management and maintenance management; C, expansion of the existing facilities to support fishing and cruise line industries; and D, replacement of gantry cranes at the end of its useful life to maintain uninterrupted cargo movement. As part of the modernization program, the port through Public Law 34-70 obtained $71,445,000 in revenue bonds to finance certain capital improvements and to refinance all or a portion of outstanding loans of the Port Authority. In 2018, on, of July 20th, ProMarine Technology submitted its findings in an underwater assessment and inspection services of F-1, F-3, F-4, F-5, and F-6, and based on their assessment, found that the waterfront facilities were in dire need of repair and provided recommendations for such repair. Moreover, Illicitor in Guam finds to, that to ensure the uninterrupted flow in the deployment of fuel products, which could be obtained in F-1 fuel pier or Gulf fuel pier, a connectivity line would need to be installed at F-1 to allow discharged or loaded fuel to be routed to and from other petroleum fuel company's storage tanks. To enhance the port's invoicing to ensure 100% cost recovery per the established tariffs, the terminal operating and financial management systems must also be integrated, along with an upgrade of the port's current information technology, for accurate financial data on the expenses rendered to vessels and related services versus revenues. The 2007 master plan included a recommendation for the current port administration building to be extended with an annex and a bridge connecting the building to the existing building for compliance, for compliance with the American Disabilities Act. But such project was changed in the 2013 master plan update, which endorsed that a new, larger building be constructed and the current administration building be demolished. In 2019, the port presented to the Governor, Lord of Salion Gro, and members of the Guam Legislature of the 35th Guam Legislature that if the port pursues the 2007 master plan recommendation to construct an annex with a bridge connecting to the existing administration building, a portion of the funding originally earmarked for the construction of the new administration building could otherwise be used to address the deficiencies of the port's revenue generating waterfront facilities, a connectivity fuel line between Gulf Pier and F-1 Pier, and improvements needed for the port's information technology systems. The 35th Guam Legislature unanimously agreed that an amendment to the Public Law 34-70 would allow for the reprogramming of such bond proceeds needed to address the deficiency of the port's revenue generating facilities, the connectivity fuel line between Gulf Pier and F-1, and improvements needed for the port's information systems, and all remaining balances, if any, shall be allocated to provide for supplemental funding for the procurement of a new gantry crane. On October 16, 2019, Governor Leon Guerrero signed Bill Number 159-35COR into law as Public Law 35-44, which authorized the reprogramming of the Port Authority revenue bond proceeds and amended the capital improvement projects in Section 4 Alpha of Public Law 34-70. As a result, the port issued procurement on the architectural and engineering designs for the port revenue bond projects, and in the A and E designs, the construction costs associated with the repairs exceeded those outlined in Public Law 34-70, as amended by Section 2 of Public Law 35-44. The engineering cost estimates outlined in the revenue bond mandates obtained back in 2014 are now severely underfunded. Because the mandate specifically identified the revenue bond projects' costs to be funded by the revenue bond, it did not allow the port to reallocate revenue bond proceeds to address the anticipated shortfalls of the construction costs for which has specific costs associated in these mandates. To address the shortfall, port management actively submitted requests for federal grants to fund some of the revenue bond projects, which they were awarded from the United States Economic Develop Administration $2,400,000 for the fuel connectivity line, freeing up a portion of the revenue bond proceeds for that project. Excuse me. The Board of Directors also authorized the general manager to use other funding sources for the payment of the cost of construction or improvement, or any part thereof, or any available money or funds of the Port Authority made available by a federal grant to be expended. The port held procurement solicitation openings for several of the review bond projects, resulting in either no offers being submitted or procurement construction bids' middle costs exceeded between 10% to 156% of the legislative funding cap of the respective project. A review of other bond mandates for other autonomous agencies was made, and it is noted that the port's revenue bond legislation is the only legislation which specifically states the proceeds are to finance certain authority capital improvements, including but not limited to... And each project has an associated funding cap versus other autonomous agencies' revenue bond legislations, which simply stated the project's and total amount authorized to borrow. And so this is, this is part of the reason why we're addressing this issue today, is because the other autonomous agencies have the flexibility to determine where their best revenue streams are and how do we, and how they would invest in it. In the situation that we're facing now without this bill, the bond is not, the port is not given that flexibility of the bond to be able to identify the revenue streams that will improve our economy in Guam, but rather there are certain caps where they have to work around, and it does not meet the requirements for the construction costs and capital improvement projects as needed. Although the Board of Directors authorized management to use other funding sources, it appears the bond, the revenue bond legislations may disallow the port from exceeding the costs associated with the project as outlined in Public Law 34-70 and as amended by Section 2 of Public Law 35-44. There was an amendment to Public Law 34-70, as amended by Section 2 of Public Law 35-44, to remove the legislative funding cap strictly tied to the 2018 revenue bonds, funds, is necessary in order for the port to accomplish its commitment of ensuring the modernization program is neither, is neither further delayed nor jeopardized. It is therefore the intent of this body to amend Public Law 34-70 and amend, as amended by Section 2 of Public Law 35-44, and remove the funding caps associated with the capital improvement projects to be funded by the revenue bonds, and authorizing reprogramming of the Port Authority of Guam revenue bond proceeds to fund the shortfalls. And I'd just like to add, Madam, Madam Chair, that in such time, the, the board and the general manager of the port have been doing their due diligence, seeking out other grants and other ways of acquiring revenue to address many of the shortfalls and challenges that the port has systemically faced when it came to improving the capital improvement projects. And so now it's just, we're looking at equity, as we look to, as other autonomous agencies have, to have this flexibility so that they can reprogram the costs, and they will be able to thereby go out and move forward with the, um, request for bond approval, so that they can actually address the systemic challenges that we face today, rather than just doing a surface capital improvement project where they, they redo the administration building. And, you know, I was here in the first term when we were addressing this, this bond, and our concern was that, um, they wanted to revamp the administration building, but now the tenants are, have moved out, and so this is an opportunity for the bond to focus on really fixing the port, and this is where all of our logistics and sustainment comes in for our island. Ninety percent of our goods are imported, and so this is a, a measure that will help move not only the port forward, but move the community as a whole, especially with a lot of the activity going on in this Pacific region, where the military is, um, putting much more presence, a greater presence within our region due to our near-peer competitors and other countries. And so, uh, you know, I'd like to, at this time, you know, just recognize their outstanding work for looking for all available resources before they came to the legislature to say, "Oh, we need to reprogram now." They put forth that effort to see if they could meet the requirements, and so now this is the challenge that they are facing, that they have exhausted all resources that they've had availability to, and so now we're looking to giving them this flexibility and opportunity, just like we have done for other autonomous agencies. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Seduce is Mossy, Senator Nelson. We will have two rounds of questions for the panel this evening, and the third round will be used for comments and amendments. Each member will have five minutes per round, and you can yield your time to only one senator. We'll begin from the back, Senator Trelahi. Senator Perez.
Good afternoon, everyone, or evening. Thank you for being here. So just to clear up some things in regards to the, um, the bond, uh, so this, I guess questions for Ms. Mendiola. Is there assurances that, um, this would not affect the bond covenants?
Thank you for that question, Senator. Following the public hearing, um, on, we received, um, we put in a formal inquiry to Oric Bond Council, received a response on September 27th, 2022, um, that, uh, did say that, um, and I believe this, uh, copy of, of this was provided, um, to the body, um, I'm not sure if it's in the committee report, but it did say that, um, the Bill, um, Bill 298-36 introduced on April 25th would not impact in any material way the rights of bondholders of the port revenue bonds, um, and basically naming the, articulating all the serieses, um, series of, of, of bonds thereafter issued by the Port Authority. I also have a copy in my possession if you'd want, like to review.
Thank you so much. Okay, so the other question is, oh, what is the bond rating currently? Is, has that changed, and will that change, uh, debt service?
Uh, the bond rating does not change debt service. The bond rating is most important in the ish, the pricing. Uh, the bond ratings actually improved for the Port Authority. They went from a negative outlook to stable, um, by the, um, was it S and P or S and P and Moody's? Well, they're, uh, rated by the Standard and Poor's, um, capital A, outlook, uh, stable, and Moody's, um, outlook B, uh, capital B, uh, little A, little A too, um, uh, also stable.
Okay, wonderful. And so that, um, there's no change to debt service at this point with the, um, with the bill?
That's correct. As the bill is structured, um, if you give me one moment, Madam, Senator. Debt service through 2028 is annual, um, annually scheduled to be 5.7, approximately 5.7 million, and thereafter to be about approximately 3.6 million until its maturity in 2048.
All right, thank you. So would there, what happens if the updated costs of the port's various individual projects exceed the budgeted cost limit? Guess this question for, is for Director Rispicio.
Thank you, Senator Perez. This bill basically just asked the legislature to remove all the funding caps. Uh, and so in order to manage what the priorities today are, which just focus on the WARP, we would give that authority to the board. For example, you have $10 million in the administration building category. Our consultants say that it may only require $2 million to rehabilitate the, the current administration building with an $8 million budget to build an annex. Now, we would not be building an annex, I believe the board would not authorize the building of an annex if that 8 million is needed to be, uh, for the shortfalls in the hotel WARP or shortfalls in, uh, other CIP projects that are revenue generating.
Thank you. So basically it just allows more flexibility, uh, for the board, so it's not just so restrictive?
Correct.
Okay. All right, I think those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Brown.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to ask, what is the breakdown now? Because, I mean, you're asking to remove caps, and yet at the same time, it was the Guam Legislature, I heard the chairperson relay how we needed to remove these, but, you know, she was a member of that legislature that put all these caps and limitations. I mean, we had the opportunity even, um, pursue higher amounts of this bond rather than 71-point million dollars that ultimately the legislature authorized. So, I mean, I think for the record, it's important to be clear about that. But I specifically want to know, what is the remaining projects you're going to address? Because things were included here about the fuel pier, F1, F2, F3, F4, F5, F6, uh, which the port certainly has the opportunity out of its revenue to address repairs. There's always going to be a need of ongoing repairs to, uh, these peers primarily because, I mean, if we have an earthquake, if we have a typhoon, uh, just the continued erosion from salt water that will continue to adversely imp- salt water that will continue to adversely impact these WRFs. The port had completed a $10 million loan that the legislature had authorized to address the service life extension projects of this WRF. Specifically, those projects that were prioritized at the time were the projects that were brought forth to the bond investors to address funding. So I do have concern that now we're looking at things, particularly the fuel peers that are revenue generating for the port, why the port is not reinvesting some of that revenue money back into the repairs, rather than removing other priorities that were outlined for the port at the time the bonds were executed.
Senator Brown, thank you for the question. Certainly you were a former General Manager, Senator Torres is a former General Manager. What we've been saying from the very beginning of the introduction of this bill is that these amounts were pegged at 2014. We have not determined how they came up with those amounts in 2014, but if you look at the whole story with the H-WRF project, you were the groundbreaking. It was a $59 million bid that came in by one bidder, Sumitomo Construction. We had asked Clarence and the team, Clarence in his capacity as a CIP manager, the negotiations team, to figure out how we can bring that 59 million down to 46 million. And so this is $59 million for a $23 million budget. As you're aware, 10 million is a tiger grant, and 13 million came from these revenue bonds. And so when we negotiated down to 46 million, we also had to break it down into two phases. Phase one would just be on the WRF, phase two would be on the concrete slab, all the electrical and the conduits and all those requirements, and then phase three would be the road. We communicated to MARAD that we, Governor Leon Guero and Vin Sarriola was able to convince Federal Highway to put up to $3 million to pave the road into H-WRF. So with a $36 million for phase one, with a $23 million available to spend, we had a shortfall there of about $14 million. The governor pledged 15 million from the American Rescue Plan money, with the requirement that the port does not raise the tariffs for at least two fiscal years, and that was her economic recovery plan in that sense. Phase two of that would be $8 million for the concrete slab. So we negotiated with Sumitomo in this contract to give us up to one year to decide whether or not we have $8 million to do phase two. We're thinking that if this bill passes, the $8 million allocated for an annex could be thrown over to H-WRF shortfall. The $8 million that we put into H-WRF from the American Rescue Plan money can be reimbursed back to port funds. And if you look at every single project, the EQMR building, that's about $70,000 shortfall. The warehouse one, we had to stop the procurement on that because it came in at 3 million over what was budgeted in 2014. The Gulf Pier work, your, this statute allocates $2 million. I can't reveal the number to you, but I could say it's going to be much higher than what $2 million is going to provide. From the very beginning, we decided that although it's very clear that these numbers were sorely understated, we decided that we have to demonstrate due diligence to this legislature by going out to bid, getting in the bid, seeing what these things actually cost. It's in the committee report. We submitted our overall shortfall for all of the revenue bond funded projects to be at 29 million. But what we're doing, as you could see, is instead of spending 2.5 million for the Gulf Pier, the Gulf Pier and the F1 Fuel Connectivity Project, planning was successful in getting a Fuel Connectivity Grant.
So can I just ask for clarification? Excuse me. If I can ask for, with regards to the connectivity, because that was not included in the bond at all, and that was not presented as a project, and granted, there are going to be a number of projects that are going to come up just in the course of operations at the port. And so I just want to make sure that the key projects at the time that were identified, because those needs don't change, I mean, they're still going to be there, I want to make sure that those are prioritized over other things. I mean, wonderful that you're, you're able to get another funding source, because the connectivity was never part of the bond presentation. So how much did you get for that, and is that going to cover that cost? Because we're trying, things are being thrown in here that were not part of the original bond projects.
But we are not moving until we have the statutory authority to do so. When we came back for the First Amendment for this bill, we asked the legislature, the Board and the Governor agreed, to bring down the $17.5 million allocated for the new demolition and the new administration building. We brought that down to 10 million, and we said with the $7.5 million balance, we identified four projects. It was the fuel connectivity line, it was the financial management system upgrade, it was the terminal operating system, and it was the repairs to F1, because F1 repairs was nowhere in this revenue bond funded project. And so Bond Council opined that it's well within their guidance, that what we're doing is absolutely okay per the bond covenants. And so instead of spending the 7 million to get the fuel connectivity line, we were able to get a $3.4 million grant from the Economic Development Authority, and so that's an 80/20 match. We spent, we budgeted 2.5 million from, for the financial management system. I think we're spending ballpark of about $2 million. F1, although there's budget in here for F1, we were able to get a $23 million grant from MARAD to do the rehabilitation repair of F1 to F6, and that's an 80/20 match. And so you're seeing that even though we have opportunities budgeted in this revenue bond financing, that's not our first go-to. Our first go-to, as I'm sure was your first go-to, and Senator Torres' go-to at the time, is to look for any federal grants that are available, and then next go-to would be port revenue thereafter.
Well, it would be good if the language was clarified to add on what specifically is bond-related, and what you are looking at other sources of funding, because granted, if the port is able to get other sources of funding, that's wonderful, but I just want to make sure the key projects don't get lost in that process.
They're all, all of these items, they're all bond-related, they're all to be financed by the revenue bond.
I understand, but some of these projects were never included. F1 Fuel Pier was not included, the connectivity between the, the two fuels, peers were not included. I just think we need to distinguish that in the bill, because again, it makes it appear that, oh, well, these things weren't addressed. Well, they were not addressed at the time of the original bond bill and the original projects that at the time were determined by the port to be a priority. I don't think those priorities change. I mean, buildings and facilities continue to degenerate if they're not maintained or taken down and rebuilt.
But I'll tell you, though, as you could see, what has, what has happened is, although we're looking at a $30 million shortfall just for the, just to increase the service life of these facilities and WRFs for about five years, we have a 300 million dollar overall need at the port. We recently received a grant from the Office of Economic Adjustment, OLCCC, about $1.2 million to do a port readiness feasibility study, which will do, take care of a comprehensive in-water infrastructure assessment. It'll take a look at our aging facilities, which are about 50-plus years old, and it'll also, phase three of that, we'll take a look at some opportunities that the military can have at the port to make military readiness successful, because the port will be ready. And I'm specifically talking about some joint uses with H-WRF and with the Area A Field Tank Farm that's currently vacant. And if the Department of Defense and Joint Region Marianas and Indo-Pacific agree to utilize those facilities, then we're also looking at more throughput at the port, we're looking at more opportunity to generate revenue at the port.
So except for the admin building, because I am concerned on any continued investment in that facility, primarily the focus at the time was to address the expansion of the maintenance area, so that you would have that additional space for maintenance and also for parking your equipment. How are you going to address, if you don't use that real estate, how are you going to address additional space in the yard to accommodate maintenance and the storage of all the additional equipment that the Coast Guard does not want intermixed with the cargo?
Part of our master plan update, also, there's a very comprehensive section on how to retrofit the entire yard to accommodate the potential $15 billion of military construction coming in. I know you say that at the time they wanted to expand the maintenance yard, which was the reason to demolish the administration building, but that feedback that I got, it changed, that it was not what the maintenance department wanted.
How are you going to address the expansion? I mean, you're not going to be able to expand your real estate, how are you going to put more space for proper storage and parking of your equipment?
We have expanded the EQMR division. You know, we don't have a tuna industry on Guam anymore. When those tenants moved out of Warehouse One, we actually relocated some functions of the EQMR division. So you have, the welders are now housed in their own area, you have preventive maintenance housed in their own area. I mean, I seriously invite you to come and take a look at how maintenance has expanded. As Senator Nelson pointed out, our tenants are no longer there, so instead of leaving it dormant and vacant, we're expanding those operations so that they can be able to move around.
And do you have any additional space to address the parking of all your equipment? I mean, a single top lifter could take all the space and more than the session hall. How are you addressing the proper parking and storage of those? I mean, I understand the physical buildings, I'm very familiar with them, but how are you going to address that? Because there really is, if you look at the existing leases of the property surrounding you, including Cabris, where else in adjacent area does the port have to address those demands as growth continues?
Well, remember, we also let out four acres of property connected to the terminal yard to support the Customs Cargo Inspection Facility. Right now, the overall occupancy at the port, we're only about 40% in our container yard. So there is, there is space, and also we want to make whatever we do sustainable, and our consultants are still your same consultants at the time, it's WSP, and they're running all kinds of different scenarios, which determine that we do have capacity in the yard. And that will not be a threat to the military buildup, construction needs. We're saying phase two of what the threat would be is our aging gantry cranes, our facilities, and the need to press on with the CIP projects. We, we made a very courageous decision, the Board supported it, to proceed with H-WRF as if though we got the bio-American, as if though we're bio-American compliant. Right now, because of the bio-American challenges, we've been in a position of just waiting for MARAD to let us know if we've been approved or not, so we're proceeding as if though we got the bio-American waiver, and our position is that we would save at least $12 million. We had to spend $12 million in order to get a $10 million grant. And so we're very, we've been communicating that to MARAD. We're looking at the steel, it's gonna, we'd probably save around $4 million in the steel alone, but if we buy steel that's bio-American compliant, we're looking at 18 months versus six months if we're able to get our steel from Japan, like the Department of Defense was able to, to do their Navy Pier. They don't have to comply with bio-American. Those steel beams that they purchased for their Navy Yard, they go through the Port Authority's yard. And so we've been added for the last three and a half years, particularly the last two years, has given us a greater opportunity because of the geopolitical issues, because of the Indo-Pacific and Pacific deterrence plans. The Port Authority of Guam is positioned to be more, more important as ever before in the eyes of the military. So we're seeing a lot of, we're seeing DOD look at what we have. We have Congressman Wilson, we have Admiral Nicholson, we have Admiral Akhenyeluk, they're all writing letters of support for what DOD can do to, to invest in the Port Authority so that they're not having any capacity issues at the port when they have to push out their military projects.
And so how much are you looking at reinvesting back into the old admin building?
We're going to just have to do whatever's minimally necessary to address the spouting, and so our consultants have said maybe up to $2 million to do that. But if there's a need to do something with, by way of an administration building in the long run, there's potential USDA loans, there's other grants. We're looking at some resiliency grants to, for ports, because with sea level rising and climate change, and the fact that we have to lift our WRF up by maybe two to four inches, those are things that are imminent threats to our operations. But what we see right before us is, we need, we need the Board to have the ability to make the determination to still follow the different requirements of this bond structure so that we don't have a 40% taxable occurrence. We're, we're very aware of what our constraints are, but by lifting these caps, you're going to allow us to be able to do things like foregoing an annex building. I'm not saying we're never going to do an annex building, I'm not saying we're never going to have a new administration building, but in the context of where we're at versus where we need to be, we need to do everything we can to get H-WRF operational. That's going to be our moneymaker. Once that thing is fully operational, that's going to be a moneymaker for the port, but also it's going to be an alternate WRF and a potential home for the cruise ship industry.
Just one more question, because my time is running out for this round. Again, with regards to space, how are you going to address any additional physical expansion of the port? I realize maybe you might say your cargo space right now is underutilized, but it can only be used for cargo unless the Coast Guard all of a sudden miraculously changes their requirements. How are you going to address any physical ground expansion of the port?
I'm going to have Joe have an opportunity to say that, but what I've been trying to say is, we're addressing those in our master plan.
Thank you, General Manager Respechel. I just want to say at the outset that I had the opportunity to, to work with Senator Brown back then when we're doing the revenue bonds, and we did our due diligence in trying to make sure that we address all those critical infrastructure projects that were in the original bond, original law. Since then, we made efforts to make sure that, of course, there was challenges that we've had through the COVID-19, that we want to make sure that, because this is a 2018 bond, we want to get it out to the public. So ever since we put it out for bid, the, the amounts have changed. Steel prices have gone up, COVID has made an impact on the industry, so we finally found out, right, yeah, so we found out all of that. So with regards to the, the space, the port modernization program actually provided an additional nine acres for break bulk area, and there's also 4.6, which is, like you mentioned, Senator Brown, that those are all for container space and break bulk. However, in that same area, there's also areas that, when you go inside the main gate, there's, there's a section where all the top lifters have been staged, there's areas where the forklifts have always been also housed. Warehouse One is now open, because a lot of the tenants are no longer there, so it allows us additional space. EQMR, like the GM had mentioned, we've taken them, because we have also that project for the EQMR, we've taken a lot of the folks that were there, and we, we're going to be organizing them based on how the construction phasing is going to be set up, to be put up in Warehouse One. So we have additional space at Warehouse One, we have additional space towards the high mass last, high mass light, lighting on the, on the entrance to the gate, and then we have the section where the top lifters are going to be all housed. And then also, although there's a section towards the 4.6 area that's set aside for container yard, containers, there's also section there that, if it's not being used, it's closer to the WRFs, like F6, those are areas that we can put top lifters. So there's a possibility for additional areas to stage those equipment.
Well, I certainly hope in the upcoming term we'll be, have proper oversights, and you can enlighten us and the public with regards to what these potential plans are. Thank you, Madam Chair, I'll wait for the next round, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown. We will take a moment's recess to reset our system.